Roll call.
Henry.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Kelly.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Cole, here, Rabel.
Here.
Heflin.
Here.
Alright, everyone's here tonight. You need the approval of the minutes of December 1st, 2014.
Second.
Motion second through, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post on time. So she carried. Uh, brings us to elections and appointments.
House and senate position for Bill, he's been here for five years. In December 2019, it fired a petition for Jay Lorri, Steve Lumberdin, Kate Myers, Tim Kelly, Jay Morrow, and...
Mary, do you want to read that?
Yeah, um, slight deviation from what is on the agenda. Uh, mayor appointments, uh, to the Lookie County Transit Board. Uh, will include Dick Morrow as our primary, as the city's primary representative on the board. Brian Johnson will be his alternate. And then Deb Cole is a joint Keith Newark, uh, appointment. Um, these, uh, will be for a term of three years ending on, uh, in December of 2017. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Uh, specials committees, uh, Keith? Join me down front. Keith, it's been a privilege and a pleasure of serving with you on both council and then now it's you as the auditor. Uh, it's gonna be sad to see you go. Uh, when I came on council back in 2000, you were kinda my mentor. Uh, we did a couple lunches and stuff and you kinda showed me your ropes and I really appreciate that. And, uh, so just a little token from each city councils, this Keith Alexander, auditor, 2002 to 2014.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Alright, unfinished business or non petitions and communications?
Mayor, please recommend, uh, changes to chapter 1166 specifically. Our current order is 1166-02, prohibited uses changed to 1166-02A to read simple family dwellings and condominiums. With the orders with Ohio arson charter, 5311. 1166-04, prohibited uses changed to 1166-04B to read multiple family dwellers.
Okay, and we will set the, uh, public hearing for January the 20th of 2015. Uh... Let's see it at 7:20. Is that for 7:20? That'll be enough.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Senator.
Make motion of, uh, review of those communications that we received and followed.
Motion second received and follow, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post on time. So she carried. Brings us the visitors. Any visitor'd like to speak, uh, approach the podium, state your name and address and call your concerns.
Yes, excuse me, uh, the public hearing is January, what, 20?
20.
The 19th is, uh, Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And so offices will be closed and council meeting.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there will be a change.
So, yeah.
Alright, active visitors. Any visitor'd like to speak? Seeing none, can you move on? Uh, committee reports. Finance and budget, Mr. Crable.
Finance committee met this evening at 6:25. We have one legislative request and one that's repealing ordinance 13, 2010, establishing the income tax proportions to 94 and 3/4 percent, general fund, 5 and 4 percent debt service. Under other items, uh, budget appropriations ordinance is on council agenda for the first reading tonight. Second reading will be next Monday. Cleanup ordinance will be ready for the summer 22nd council meeting as well. Will be presented as an emergency. Uh, third item, next council meeting, we'll have four gen items. It'll be a second reading for the budget, second reading for proportions ordinance, cleanup ordinance, and scoring again of, of the elect Morrow. And Keith is, uh, it's a precious pleasure working with everyone for below these many years. Anything else to add, Keith?
Happy Dad's, thank you.
Keep y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public services, Mr. Harrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the public service committee will be next Monday, December 22nd. And, uh, as you know, we have a, a brief meeting at 5:30, so, uh, our meeting will start immediately following that.
John Geller, anything?
Nothing to add.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you. Public safety, what you got, sir?
Hey, Mr. President, public safety net, uh, December 8th at 5:30 PM, we began with the, uh, fire with our police department. Uh, under, uh, November's statistics, calls for service for 1,076 of those, 109 were fence reports, 56 were arrests, 37 were accidents, and 82 were seductions. Under overtime usage, for November, uh, there's a total of $13,449 with year-to-date total of $144,163. Under alarms, there are a total of 29. Uh, those 25 were commercial and four were residential. Under communications, the chief reported that the Marx radios are installed in the communication system and the program is now finished. Uh, Mark cars now have the Marx, you wish your aid only, and have Newark, Lookie County, Tausic, Ranville, and, uh, Chief, uh, is it, oh, SHP?
State of the Union.
Thank you. Channels, so all those channels are now, uh, available for mutual aid on the Mark system. The overtime line item is now $9,163 over budget. And the chief reported that there has been three lengthy weeks this year, two FMLAs and one due to a on-duty injury that has caused these significant, significant overtime expenditures. Uh, chief also reported that Patrolman Michael Banks will be promoted to sergeant, uh, at Monday, January 5th, uh, council meeting. And Patrolman Markley, uh, should have completed his, uh, field training, uh, by that time. With that, we move on to fire. Under fire, November's statistics, uh, fire runs there are a total of 37 with a year-to-date total of 460. EMS runs were at 126 for the month with year-to-date total of 1,754. Transports were 75 for the month with year-to-date total of 977. On the medical aids, there were a total of 32, uh, that were given and 35 that were received on the medical, uh, mutual aids. Uh, chief had no legislative requests under the monthly, um, expense report. On November 2014, wages were $65,740.81 with a monthly overtime of $17,394.81. The yearly total in overtime was $283,003.17. Under equipment, uh, the chief reported that, uh, they got their last invoice for medic one, it is now finally all done and fixed. That last invoice was about $3,800. This was to repair the re-chan system, which is a mission system in the year. Also under equipment, uh, he had noted that the pumps are now tested, uh, most of the vehicles have been serviced. And they have, uh, replaced the tires on engine number two, rear tires. Under training, uh, chief reported that, uh, they are setting up some building familiarization pre-plans. And these are existing businesses within the city so that if there's an incident or a fire, they're familiar with the, uh, with the property. Under old business, uh, chief reported that, uh, the city now has a power cot, um, a demo, power cot from Stryker, uh, that the, uh, department are utilizing to, to kind of see if they're gonna like that. He also reported that we will be, uh, filing before the end of the year, uh, for a BWC grant. And this grant will help pay for these power cots. With that, we adjourn to 6:12. Chief Evans, do you have anything else to report?
Nothing else right now, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Chief Mason, do you have anything to report?
I have to serve that one.
Thank you, chief, thank you.
Community bill concerning, Mr. Crable.
Eddie, community. Development design will be at 5:30 PM on January 2nd, 2017. Eddie, do you have anything?
Thank you. Thank you. Parks Recreation and David Che, this is Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks Recreation and David Che met this evening at 5:56. First item on our agenda was Christmas at City Hall, which was coordinated again this year by the Friendship Club. The mayor provided, um, possibly a detailed report that was prepared by Dan Wilken outlining within and, um, reported that across the 670 people attended. I know it looked like a great success. I got outside, but I had the obligation, couldn't stand in that line. I thought if we were to walk past, it would really, really help with the event. Second item, Park Board, um, there was an appointment, um, God, Pastor will be appointed for another five-year term. Retirement, Jimmy Crater will be retiring early next year, and his truck bike will be this week and officially retired at the end of January. His position has been posted for park supervisor position, and today was the deadline for supplies of the jet of, um, some of her places at Craig White Sue. Um, the next item was to amend ordinance 48, 2003 in relation to dogs on the bicycle paths. The language needs to be clarified that they are allowed on bike trails to hack their ass, just like parks. Um, Director Yelich will work with the law director to, um, establish a verbiage that will clearly outline that information when we consider the date. Under other items, we have an inquiry about the possibility of a dog park discussion in soup for a mayor about how we would make that happen. If we could make that happen, it would need to first have space and, uh, discuss with those real people within that area. Last item under other, um, I was thinking of court with the David Che, um, had their Christmas open house Saturday. They had live performance of about 700 attendance. That's all that I have to check into.
Definitely, Brian.
We adjourned at 6:00 by, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm gonna move back up to, uh, committee report for streets and drainage for Mr. Humphre- sorry, I passed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, streets and drainage met this evening at 5:30. We have a lot of other streets who will definitely give these reports. Several items on the agenda, first was the passing of, uh, potholes, uh, there's going around, uh, checking the streets, whether it's them operating. Hopefully if their neighbors you see, give us a call, get on them. The second item is rock salt, uh, we have 310 tons in the salt barns and hope that the weather will be in our favor. And, uh, we are permitted to, uh, pour 500 tons, right, Bob?
Yeah.
Uh, third, the street signs have been replaced in Willow Ridge that were dispelled. And, uh, also the mayor said that the sign at the corner of Blackfoot Trail and, uh, Louisville Road has been hit. He asked Bob when it might, might be able to be replaced. Bob said, "The weather is good, maybe, uh, might be able to get it this week." He will call Chris and tell me about it. Uh, thing on, uh, mailboxes, the fourth item, uh, this is Bob, just wondering, uh, what we, what we do as far as mailboxes, uh, snow. If we hit the mailbox, we really do will replace it. And, uh, he said that the guys are good about recording it if they do get it. Uh, if it was snow that took it down, uh, we do not, uh, replace them. We try to please residents and residents that we can, Bob was telling. He does well to check on all of them, uh, and they're called in. Uh, fifth item is new dump truck, uh, the truck is being painted and the hoses are in and should have, uh, end this week. Uh, Keith says he would, uh, recommend that we, uh, put the, uh, the truck that, uh, we're gonna put on eBay, do that around March or April, and that he would, uh, give Jay the, uh, training on how to get that new thing done. Uh, under other items, Bob sent an email out that was talking about the left turn lane, uh, that goes into the bank there on 79 Rockburners. And, uh, Bob said that he went out and looked at it today and he said, "Did not think that it was a good problem, but he will check more into it." And, uh, the mayor said that he'd talk with the manager, uh, he said, "Line, line, line west, line west." No. Uh, Jeff Crable then reported that, uh, he got a call from Esther Moore on Boishinville Road and that she was asking if, uh, the possibility of putting up a deer crossing sign. She says, "Deer cross there, uh, near her home, uh, not only today, but all times of the day." And she was asking about a, uh, deer crossing sign and Bob said he would talk with her. And, but, uh, we will not be putting up deer crossing sign. Deer cross so many places in the city, that's all we get, we're just gonna put it up. This is my opinion. That's all we can get done. Put him up the sign. Bob didn't say this, I did. They can put him up in front of my house if they wanna put up signs. Uh, with, uh, nothing else to report, uh, we adjourn to 5:55 PM. Anything to add, Bob? That's all.
Thank you. Uh, planning commission, Mr. Crable.
Planning commission will meet this Thursday, December 18th at 10 AM. We have one agenda item, uh, Mr. Humphre- and Dad? Mayor Johnson?
Nothing to add.
Thank you.
Alright, so the committee reports, introduction of ordinances, ordinance 89, 2014.
Ordinance 89, 2014, we are establishing the income tax proportions as follows. 94 for 75 percent general fund, 5 and 45 percent debt service, repealing ordinance 13, 2014.
Well, Mr. Crable. Uh, motion to waive the second reading of ordinance 89, 2014.
Second. Motion second wave, roll call.
Henry?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Crable?
Yes.
Motion waived, Mr. Crable.
Well, Mr. Crable. Motion to adopt ordinance 89, 2014.
Motion second to adopt, any comments or discussion?
Mr. President, very nice. Point of information, appreciate, uh, council waiting second reading on this and would encourage, uh, sortance to be passed. Um, this, uh, allocation of already come taxes, general fund and debt service, uh, as we agree, is in line with, uh, the overall budget proposal for next year, so I appreciate this.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Crable?
Yes.
Heflin?
Ordinance 89, 2014 has been adopted. Ordinance 90, 2014.
An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures in the city of Keith, Lookie County, Ohio, during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2015.
Ordinance 90, 2014, do you have for the second reading? Ordinance is on second reading, ordinance 88, 2014.
An ordinance offering the mayor to enter a contract to deliver the county insurance for reimbursement for the council, which is dependent to the city of Keith, Lookie County.
President?
Mr. Crable.
Motion to adopt ordinance 88, 2014.
And motion second to adopt, any comments or discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Crable?
Yes.
Ordinance 88, 2014 has been adopted. Alright, resolutions on first reading, resolution 2014 dash seven.
Resolution recognizing the hard work and dedication of the Friendship Club of Lookie County.
Mr. President?
Mr. Crable.
Motion to waive the second reading of resolution 2014 dash seven.
A motion second to waive, roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Crable?
Yes.
Motion waived been approved?
President?
Mr. Crable.
Motion to adopt, resolution 2014 dash seven.
Motion second to adopt, any comments or discussion?
President? Mr. Crable, you read this?
If you want to read it, you can read it. You wanna read it or you want to look at the court?
Let's, let's read the whole of that resolution, please.
Your voice holds out.
Resolution recognizing the hard work and dedication of the Friendship Club of Lookie County. Whereas it is one of responsibilities, Council of the City of Keith to recognize extraordinary organizations and people. Whereas the Friendship Club of Lookie County was formed in April 2013, so that this honorable group of individuals continue to enjoy the fellowship of one another and continue to serve the community. And whereas, in 20 months of organization and organized, centered major personal events involving a wide community of children to veterans. Whereas their willingness to step forward and sacrifice their own time, energy, and personal finances provide quality events that are free. Cost to community is admirable and worthy of public recognition. And whereas, officials and citizens of the Ohio Bank of partnership with the Friendship Club of Lookie County and the City of Keith, and now therefore be resolved by Council of the City of Keith, State of Ohio. Council of the City of Keith recognizes the hard work and dedication of the Friendship Club of Lookie County and its goal to many more use of community service together.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Crable?
Yes.
Resolution 2014 dash seven has been adopted. Alright, there are no resolutions for second reading. Brings us to reports of city officials. Mayor Johnson?
Hey, Mr. President, uh, welcome to all, uh, attending the city. Um, real quick, I just wanna, uh, echo the sentiments, uh, just expressed by city council in appreciation of the hard work and efforts of those people who volunteer, um, with the Friendship Club to, um, not just the events that, uh, that, uh, have taken place the past couple of years here at City Hall, but I'm also very mindful of this past May's Armed Forces Day Parade, um, which the club was so integral in organizing. And one that, uh, by anybody who attended or, uh, participated in the parade, uh, would have to admit, that was one of the more outstanding parades that Lookie County has seen in a very, very long time. And I know, uh, firsthand that participants in the parade from outside the community were extremely impressed with the level of, uh, organization and involvement for that parade. And because of such, um, are eagerly looking forward to the 2015 Armed Forces Day Parade. So, again, thank you. Um, uh, I know we've got another, uh, short council meeting next week, but this being Keith's, uh, what I would call last formal, uh, council meeting. Uh, Keith, I want to thank you, um, for all of the help that you were to me in the five years that I've been the mayor. Um, you provided me with outstanding information, uh, a well-informed and thoughtful perspective on different ideas and, and things that I've, you know, wanted to do. And, uh, um, beyond all of that, um, I, I think you've also become my friend. And, uh, I'm gonna miss, uh, miss not working with you. Uh, but I can't, uh, I can't express enough how appreciative I am for the, uh, for the time and help that, uh, that you've given me, uh, in my position, from your position. So, thank you very much. Very much. Um, I want to, uh, I wanna just, you know, at this time of year and, and this particular meeting, I like to share some sort of, uh, message, uh, in regards to the season that we're, that we're in and going to enjoy. And I was reminded this past weekend via Twitter of an unbelievably poignant event that took place, uh, almost 100 years ago. Um, this past weekend, I received a tweet from the account of the German Embassy in Washington DC. I follow their Twitter account. And members of the Great Britain Embassy in Washington and the Canadian Embassy in Washington took part in a friendly soccer match with members of the German Embassy in Washington. And the reason for this was to commemorate an event that occurred 100 years ago called the Christmas Truce. In 1914, uh, European countries had been at war with each other for a number of months. And even at that point, the lines had somewhat stabilized and the men were in their trenches. And, uh, as you can imagine, uh, uh, the death and, uh, destruction, uh, was extreme. However, on, as, as I understand the story, haven't read it before, on the, not, on Christmas Eve night, centuries in, in the trenches of the British and Canadian lines noticed some lights dancing around from the lines where the German troops were. What had happened was that the German army had sent up to the front, uh, pine tree branches, cutoffs of pine trees. Because the German tradition had been to have pine, uh, have Christmas trees. So this was the German army's attempt to give their troops a bit of Christmas at that time. And they had put candles on the trenches, and they were actually, uh, candles on the, on the pine trees that they had there in the trenches. And they were actually singing Silent Night. And the Germans would sing a verse of Silent Night. And then the British troops on the other side would sing the next verse in English. And the German troops on the other side would sing the third verse in, in German, and so forth. So come the next morning of Christmas, at various points along the front, there were German troops and Allied troops that actually got up out of their trenches and did not fire upon each other and co-mingled in the death and mire that had become no man's land at that point. And there was a kind of impromptu truce that took place. Soldiers from the Allied armies, particularly the British and Canadians, would have soccer matches against their counterparts over in the German trenches. Uh, an unbelievable thing to imagine, uh, taking place. And in a camp that really didn't replicate itself the next year because the high commands of both armies made sure that it was understood that you were not to do that, to fraternize with the enemy. But almost 100 years ago now, um, I think it was a, a very poignant way of expressing the, um, the special nature of the Christmas season. Uh, and, uh, I was reminded of that as I got this tweet from the German Embassy, that they had a soccer match on Saturday commemorating that particular event. So I just thought I'd share that story with you. And, uh, so wish all of you who may not be here next week a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Andre Alexander. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for the kind words and, uh, the rest of you that have expressed the same. And, uh, thanks to all that are here tonight and welcome, Jay. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you. Love, Rick, and Morrison.
I know, I've been friends for about 20 years, and we've worked together three years now. It's always been a pleasure and, uh, to see around someplace, thank you for much.
When Butch is fine.
And we have Butch, once Butch is all we have.
Uh, I'll start down with you. Since I, I left you on the committee reports, I'll start with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to everyone, especially the hardworking people that are really put on a good show. My wife, she wants to see it again next year, so we'll be back. To Keith, I just want to say, hey, it's been a very nice time. You've helped me and all to kind of keep me straight, keep me, my hot head under control. Okay, so I appreciate that. Thank you. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to say congratulations to Friendship Club. We had a great opportunity to be down at Bob Evans' stand of paws. Got a chance to help them out and, well, that's an interesting group. And we had a great time at the time with the children and the helpers. And then we had, then I had the opportunity of being Father Christmas at the David's House, not Saturday nights. And again, that doesn't make any difference whether you have the long robe on, whether you have to stand up, you know, the eyes of the children, it's just so rewarding. And it's unbelievable. And I get more out of it. Keith, congratulations on your retirement. We're going to find out that you're going to be able to just, just. And everybody up here and everybody out in the audience will have a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to welcome everybody here tonight and certainly thank you to the Friendship Club for everything that you guys have done here just over the Christmas holiday and and stuff in the past. We were talking about all the events that you guys have put on in a short time, resolution that's put in process. You just pull together and you get things done, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Andre Alexander.
I have to remember when I first decided I was going to run for council and there you were, right there, wanting to help me and so and ever since then, you've been helping. I remember when I first got on board here, I'm thinking, how in the world, how in the world is this whole structure going to work? So I know I came in to see you many times in your office for help and you were certainly a lot of help. You know, most, quite a few others were there for me right from the beginning, so I'm certainly going to miss you and hopefully you're no stranger, you're around. Congratulations on your retirement. Thank you very much. Yes. You on that? Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been said over and over, but I don't think it's said too many times. I want to congratulate you as well and thank you for all the service of the city. I know I'm still on state, see those across the street, I'm a citizen. I've seen it over and through the in summer, yeah. Anyway, I know I'll still be seeing, but I also want to thank the Friendship Club. Like I said, I couldn't get close to the event, but it looked like it was wonderful and the love of people was going on inside, but I couldn't stay. So anyway, keep up the good work and see you next week. Just missed you all and you all a good moment. So that's all from me. Thank you.
Mr. Henry.
I too want to congratulate Keith. We've been together since the get-go and I enjoyed your parents and you took us all out from your home place, Gavin, that party, we had a good time and very impressive. And the only thing, when he came to auditor, he suggested, council president, that he and I would negotiate a union contract. I didn't think that was a very good idea because we had a rough time later, but we got through. You know what Mark goes through every year. And I too like to thank the Friendship Club. I didn't get a come and help park cars this year with our American Legion, had funerals I was involved in and, but one of the girls, one of the nurses from hospice told me, she said, you just tell everyone who is responsible for that, that that is the greatest thing they can do because they work long hours. And that was the only chance she had of getting her daughter in front of the Santa was at this Friendship Club here at the City Hall. And I said, that's good, I'll tell Jan if I have to walk over to her house and tell her. So we do appreciate it, Jan. I love you. And I'd like to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and have a good time. And I told council and office that Wayne Wright, he used to be at the barber over at the Fire Station One, he's at the, the Percy Gold, that's it.
Arlington.
Arlington nursing home now, they had to move him out of one here because they had to get this equipment to pull him, get him up out of bed. He's totally immobile. They don't have any sense of where he's at or who he is, so keep that family in your prayers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. President. Welcome everyone tonight, especially with the Friendship Club. Got a small sampling of the Friendship Club, but I've got to tell you, I've volunteered a few times with these folks, a lot of organization, a lot of dedication, and most of all, a lot of energy from these folks, so. Well, can't get there, full of energy, they do a lot with this community and themselves. Keith, known you for many, many years and worked together with you for twelve years. Just like Mr. Kelly said, you've been a mentor to me as well. I've, I've looked up to you and a lot of your guidance has, I've through myself as a, as a professional. Thank you. Thanks. So anything to add, others? Go down below, we'll start with Chief Mason, who's having a birthday on December seventh. Keith.
I say congratulations, Keith. I didn't know that Bush never bought. I had the opportunity to write, I'll go along to you. Congratulations, Keith.
Chief Hudson.
I have nothing.
Eddie Hudson. John Goyler.
I'd like to congratulate Keith too and have a wonderful weekend. I'm sure he'll be back in a while.
Kim Gill.
I'd also like to congratulate Keith because he's been a good to the cops, a parking out, and a supporter, and we have a relationship, which lucky to enjoy and enjoy. And we got our two little grand dollars to the Friendship Club. We really enjoyed it because it was a wonderful event. And thank you. And everybody happy.
I'm done. I work with Keith on council and auditor and appreciate your service and honor this Keith, I just jot down a couple of things here that both would be both the things you did as council, but also as auditor. First, I'm going to call you Mr. Passport, because I don't think we'd have passports at this point in for you, this our debt program. Mr. eBay, does like you, I don't think we'd have the eBay, they're going on selling the stuff. I'm going to call it Mr. Ladder of Investments, I think you were the one that said we need to ladder our investments out to get different interest rates, and so they went along with one time, so remember that. And the thing you'd probably be most famous for is your co-Mister Splash for me when we opened up the swimming pool, we went on the slides. So, you know, you've had all these other major accomplishments, but that was probably the biggest, you know, biggest splash that we can make. But it's been a privilege working with you and everything, and I'm sure you'll be back because you can't stand away. I know, I'll be, will be back in here, maybe just, either over there or in here or something or anything, so we'll see. Anything else tonight? I'm going to use a prerogative, does anyone that's out there want to speak, since you didn't speak the first time, anyone in Friendship Club or anyone who'd like to say a few words or anything like that? This is your opportunity. Since I was the first time, I'll let, you know, someone else will say something.
I will.
Oh, Jesus. I said so myself.
He goes to the door, doesn't he?
Other than that.
I just wanted to reiterate that there is a great group of people out here that are doing wonderful things for the city. And with the comments from the people that you've heard from and different things, can't ask for a better group to work with, and they've accepted me in their group, so, you know.
How about it?
They're wonderful people and I'm sure we're going to do some other great things, so. Becky Goodwin. From Heat, forty-five, Mill Road, or somewhere, wherever you have to find me. But anyway, thank you so much for recognizing the Friendship Club. I know their, their whole heart goes into everything that they do. Their mission is simply to have fun with one another, and believe me, they do. Be friends and to provide activities for Licking County, and they do it from the bottom of their heart. That's their whole mission, they have no other objectives other than just to make people happy. And I want to thank those that have helped throughout the seasons and that we are about seventy-some strong. Doesn't mean that all seventy of them work on every activity or all many activities, they just like to eat. So that's fine, but I want to recognize those that are here, but I ask them if they'll stand, just so that we can see who they are and of course, we're not a lot of others, but stand up just a little bit and thank you so much for all the support and thank you people for recognizing me. That means a lot to them, I know that.
Seeing none? Any other new business done, reading a bid? You should have had a bid a week ago last time. Mislanias, nothing, force for German. Second. Oh, fair, say aye? Aye. You're right there, thank you very much.